Well, good evening, everyone. And thank you to all who have chosen to attend our work session with PECAN tonight. I am calling to order the work session of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. It is Monday, pardon me, Tuesday, March 23, 10:00 PM. And so Candace, I guess we need to start with roll call. Candace, are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
And Killian?
Yeah.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Kopp?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Okay, and tonight we have a presentation and discussion with the folks who are, I guess, managing Know-About or something, the Platteville Community Area Network. I see several folks in the audience. Dan Dargal, would you like to introduce yourself first?
I'm Dan Dargal. I'm the technical representative or technical person for PECAN.
Okay. I believe the next person I see on my screen that is probably on the PECAN board is Bill Kloster. Bill?
Yeah, Bill Kloster masquerading as Deborah Ice tonight. I'm the treasurer for PECAN.
Okay. And Todd Lowell. Todd, I've not met you. I understand you're at Southwest Health.
Hi, yes, thank you for having us. My name is Todd. I'm the Director of IT at Southwest Health. I am also the Chair of PECAN.
Jim Babel, I see you're on here. Are you on the PECAN board?
Yes, as the school district, we are a partner with PECAN.
Okay. Mike Shearer?
Yes, hello, everyone. Mike Shearer, I'm also on PECAN representing the university, and I'm the Vice Chair of the group.
And I believe that's likely all the PECAN representatives tonight. And we welcome Shane Drinkwater and Bob Kinney, who are with Grant County. Shane is the IT Director for Grant County. And a special welcome to a person I called one of the techno twins when I was on the school board, Dan Steinbeck, who for years was involved with IT for the Platteville School District. Otherwise, I think what I see are staff members. Did I miss anyone who's involved with IT or PECAN? Okay, Adam, do you want to take it from here and introduce whoever the person is that's going to be presenting?
Yeah, certainly. So again, the purpose of this work session and what we assume will probably be multiple either conversations or work sessions on the road is this really dives into directly with our strategic plan, where we've talked about finding ways to look at, consider and improve broadband services for the city of Platteville and obviously surrounding Platteville. So one of the main items we had in our strategic plan was to, especially for new staff members, council members who either are new or it doesn't always hurt to have a refresher about PECAN. So that was essentially one of the main goals we had was to have multiple conversations with PECAN about kind of the association's creation history and then start looking at brainstorming, you know, potential and possible ideas of how we could look at expanding PECAN or what their kind of long-term plans are and how that fits into kind of the city of Platteville's overall strategic and broadband planning initiatives. And as well as the conversations we continue to have kind of with the county about, you know, potentially what we could do for Grant County as a whole. So tonight what we asked was for Dan, Todd, and potentially any members of PECAN to kind of give a little bit of a history background on what PECAN was, how it came to be, and then just allow some time to talk about potentially, you know, some projects that they're working on or some potential initiatives the council may want to consider in the future. So I guess I will kick it over to Todd, who I believe is going to start this off, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Adam. So I believe a kind of a background history document possibly was provided to you over the last day, day or so, but you know, not to read that, but you know, just kind of talk a little bit about that history of PECAN. PECAN, for those of you that don't know, and I'm not sure how many of you were on on the council when Dan Dargal presented three years ago, which a lot of this information just kind of came from a PowerPoint, a more elaborate PowerPoint that Dan did back then. But PECAN is an unincorporated nonprofit association, you know, that's made up of members here in Platteville, you know, that being UW Platteville, City of Platteville, School District, Southwest Health, you know, your Platteville Real Estate Foundation, the Business Incubator, Inspiring Community, and the St. Mary's-St. Augustine's. So that makes up our membership at this point. We have a board that meets monthly to kind of discuss normal business such as paying bills and doing that, but also to help, you know, trying to brainstorm and come up with ideas that not only can provide other opportunities for other entities in the Platteville community, but you know, just, you know, to kind of discuss those issues and concerns that, you know, all of us members may have moving forward. We own a what's called a dark fiber network here throughout Platteville. You know, that being said, it's fiber that's in the ground. It doesn't have services on either end of it until one of the members takes advantages and puts equipment on each end to make that connectivity. Some of us use that fiber for strictly internet access. Others use it for, you know, use in terms of connecting other campuses and other buildings through our entities, you know, the city uses that to get interconnected activity, you know, between all of your different, you know, buildings and facilities. The hospital has multiple connections throughout the community along with the school district. You know, so that's kind of how everybody uses it. There are multiple options of internet service providers that are available to us, you know, by having the PECAN fiber available. You know, several of them have what's called a POP here within, or a point of presence within the city of Platteville, which allows us to gain access to them, you know, without having direct connections provided by those providers. So in turn, really saves, you know, on a lot of the cost associated with getting that fiber, fiber network or fiber internet connection, you know, to an individual building or facility. The PECAN, you know, organization was founded, I don't know, Dan can correct me when he gets to speaking. I know it was founded shortly after the UW Extension received the NTIA BTOC grant, which helped fund a lot of this infrastructure that the PECAN network overseas or PECAN group oversees. Also, some of that fiber that's in the ground was part of, you know, an in-kind donation from the city or from the school district, and both the city and the university at the time also donated a significant amount of money to help make this infrastructure possible. At the time of the funding or the grant, there was just the three entities involved, which, you know, was the university, the city, and the schools. Since then, obviously, you can see based off of that membership, we have grown, which is great because the more nonprofits that we can get involved, you know, the larger expanse of that network and resources are made available. So our network is, Dan does an excellent job as our technical advisor, fiber expert. We rely heavily on Dan, but Dan has designed this network to be, for the most part, redundant. Almost every connectivity on here has some type of redundancy in that, you know, meaning that there's a loop or multiple loops going around, and Dan tries to engineer that so that if any one particular area gets a cut in our fiber, you know, hopefully, the business or entity is not, you know, not down because of that. There are a few instances where there, you know, there's only single points and that, you know, it's few and far between, but overall, the redundancy is there to help keep our members up and running. And just that last point I had on there is just to, you know, for those of you that may not be aware, the city has actually been putting conduit in the ground when you've been doing street reconstruction projects, which, you know, some of the PECAN fiber is in some of that conduit, and the majority of that being utilized, you know, to help get city facilities up and going. But it is, you know, possible that you have, you know, a decent amount of conduit on some of your more recent street reconstruction projects that is available that, you know, you could decide how to use in the future. You know, that's just kind of a recap of what I provided, you know. I don't know, before I let maybe Dan or somebody else from PECAN elaborate a little more, does anybody have any, you know, initial questions for me that I might be able to answer?
Todd, in your initial comments, you said you have monthly meetings where you kind of approve bills that have to be paid. What kind of bills do you have to pay?
So the bills, the bills we typically have to pay are, you know, something, or the common area is that anybody that owns fiber would end up having to, you know, potentially have these bills. We are a member of Digger's Hotline, so anytime there's construction or somebody calls Diggers because they're going to do any type of utility work, or even if you're digging a hole to, you know, put a new tree in your backyard, you should really be calling Digger's Hotline to make sure that the utilities are all marked so that you don't do damage. So we are a member of Digger's Hotline, so we have those monthly bills. We also hire USIC to do all of our locates. So anytime those Digger Hotline tickets are called in, you know, USIC shows up out here and puts all those, you know, colorful flags and paint on the sidewalks and the streets and across the yard. So, you know, just so our fiber doesn't get damaged. We also, we also have insurance on us as a board and, you know, also some of our infrastructure so that we are covered, you know, from a liability standpoint. Bill, is there anything else that we, you know, really have?
The only other thing is accounting services for filing taxes.
And what are your revenue sources?
So our primary revenue source is from our membership dues. So our organization is, you know, member-driven, member-owned. So our membership dues are based off of what the cost to operate throughout the year. So we form a budget every December, fiscal year running January 1st to December, and that budget is, you know, covers those things such as estimated Digger's Hotline tickets and USIC locates, our insurances and our accounting services. So, you know, the more members we have, obviously, the more cost-effective the membership becomes for our members. So that's why, you know, not only do we want to, you know, be able to provide an infrastructure that can help individuals or businesses, nonprofit-type businesses that, you know, gain access to internet services or interconnect their buildings or facilities, you know, but the most cost-effective, you know, way to do that is to get more members into our organization. So our revenue sources are strictly that. Again, I think it's probably spelled out in that document, we are not an ISP. So just because you would connect into our fiber does not mean you have internet services. You still have to purchase that internet service. And, you know, part of the reason we are not an ISP, and you've heard me mention nonprofit a lot, is, you know, some of the state legislation, you know, right now kind of prohibits us as an organization just based off the fact that we received a lot of our funding initially to get the fiber in the ground from that NTIA BTOC grant. The legislation really kind of prevents us from becoming a telecom provider ourselves in doing that. There's always, you know, some unique ways, and, you know, Dan can maybe speak a little more to that if he speaks here tonight. You know, there's unique ways to make things happen, but, you know, in general, we cannot become a ISP and sell services. And unfortunately, the current legislation limits us to working with nonprofits.
Anybody else have questions? Kathy?
Yeah, when you first got started, when you applied for the grant, it was strictly for nonprofit. Do you recall if at one point, I mean, when that came out and what the challenge is that it's not for-profit businesses or organizations? So when you say you've been growing because you've been increasing, is it because you've been increasing membership?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, the membership has increased. That's our growth. I mean, and there's been some fiber projects, and Dan can elaborate what some of those are. But yeah, the membership initially was those three anchor institutions with UW Platteville and the city and the school district. And then, you know, as you can see, we, Southwest Health, you know, we became a member and so on. And, you know, so that's how our growth has been, is strictly been, you know, through adding a membership.
Okay. So it appears you've gone from three to eight members?
Yeah.
Correct. I have a question, Barb.
Okay, Jason, I saw you were unmuted, so I was going to call on you next.
Yeah, thank you. So what internet service provider is used then by the city and the school?
That would be, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're using Wisknet. And the majority of us actually that are members of PECAN, I believe, are using Wisknet. I'm not sure if there's any of the members that are using something different. But Wisknet is the primary one that we're all using. Just because of the model that Wisknet uses, they have a really cost-effective model that allows for growth in terms of bandwidth and everything for kind of a flat kind of rate.
Is that only limited to certain entities? Or would that be something that we could use throughout the whole community for internet?
I will let Dan answer a little more, but it typically is limited to, they're a primary provider in the education market, so they have a lot of the K-12 schools throughout the state, but they also serve nonprofits, religious groups, and healthcare. You know, and that's how Southwest is eligible, just based off of the nonprofit healthcare side of things. But I don't know, Dan, if you have more details on that?
No, that's accurate. I mean, they started out as an educational service provider, but they expanded to healthcare and other nonprofits. They do not have any interest in doing any commercial traffic.
Okay, thank you.
But Dan, you can, I don't know if you can elaborate a little more on what some of the other options are available that, you know, that we're aware of for ISPs?
So currently, there are a number of companies that are in POPs that we have access, direct access to. One of them is called Astria, formerly Packerland Broadband was their name. They were a subsidiary of CCI out of Michigan. And they actually do offer internet services currently in the industrial park, primarily there. The, they're not using PECAN to do it. They actually, so maybe back up a little bit and throw, explain things a little bit better. So the grant that we received or we were a part of, we were just one of many communities that were part of this. There were four total communities involved in this grant. And so part of that grant was all, not only to create fiber networks within communities, but to tie communities together. And so as part of this grant, there was a fiber optic line built from here to Madison. And there was shared ownership of that fiber spread between the UW, Wisknet, DOT, and Packerland Broadband, who is now Astria. Packerland Broadband formed that private partnership. So the legislation that's out there basically prohibits public entities from offering ISP connectivity for the most part. And the key to making this work and sharing this network is to have a private partner. And so in that grant application, Packerland Broadband was the private partner, unfortunately. And we tried, when we did the can itself as a subpart of that grant, to attract a private partner. We tried, but we were unsuccessful. So Packerland was more interested in other areas around the state. They certainly are using that long-haul fiber. We call it the middle mile between Madison and Platteville to deliver services, both direct to some customers. And then they also wholesale some of that fiber access to other entities. For instance, there's another company called WINS or Wisconsin. It's, it used to be called Wisconsin Independent Networks. It's now called WINS, WINS Technologies out of Eau Claire. And they're a wholesaler for internet access to primarily cell providers. So they tie cell towers together, but also telephone companies throughout the state. And they also do handle some enterprise-level networks. So if you had a larger network that you wanted to tie facilities around the state or tri-state area, they would be a potential candidate to look at. They do offer some businesses, internet access, but they aren't going to look at, you know, residential or really, you know, individual customers per se. But WINS is another company that's in that POP. So you've got WINS, WINS Technology, you've got Wisknet, you've got Packerland. Now, Central Link actually has fiber in that POP. They've not used it. They have their own infrastructure. They really don't need to, but they, you know, they certainly could be a potential point of connection for members. The, I think one of the beauties of a can in general is the members own the fiber to the ISP, therefore allowing you to select from a menu of ISPs and allowing those ISPs to compete. Whereas the typical model is the access network, that is, the fiber to your home or business is built by the ISP and they own it. And so if you wanted to look for other opportunities or competitive pricing, that other company is going to have to build fiber optics to your institution or building or whatever. And that often is prohibitive in cost. So that is one of the things that I think is really wrong with the way that networks have been built throughout the country is that it's all proprietary or owned by private entities for the most part, and therefore is very limiting in how you can use it for service. It's not as true when it comes down to wireless or satellite providers, but there is some risk in, you know, in the members operating their own fiber network. For instance, if there was some sort of lawsuit or liability, the members could potentially be liable. You also have, you know, the recurring costs and the maintenance and management of that network falls on the membership. So it takes some smarts and some money to do that. It's not free. But it does divorce the notion of the access network, you know, the local fiber network that ties things together from the actual internet service, which a lot of times is called transit traffic versus the transport traffic. We don't provide any equipment currently in our network. Customers do all that, or the ISPs do all that. We're just a fiber optic network that allows you to tie from point A to point B within Platteville. And sometimes that's very useful for, say, the city. I was counting up here, the city's got 13, at least 13 buildings that are tied together through this fiber optic network. All were done. And, you know, all these other bigger entities have some of those needs. You know, your individual resident or small business wouldn't need that sort of capability. They would just need to get to one or more ISPs. And that's also another advantage of this sort of thing. I mean, you could potentially connect to multiple ISPs simultaneously. And if you're having a problem with one, then you could use the other. You could have equipment set up to tail over from one to the other. We also allow private circuits to be kind of an on-ramp to this middle-mile fiber or other providers' fibers. So for instance, one of the things that building that middle-mile fiber did for Platteville, there was a lot of indirect benefits. And what I'm saying is that first cable really set the market, kind of pushed others to do things that they may not have done had that not happened. For instance, WINS Technology is leasing fibers on that cable, but then they also wanted to go out other directions, so they built fiber to Lancaster, they built fiber to Dubuque. So now there's like three different main cables there. Prior to this grant, there was another company called Windstream in the area that built fiber into Platteville, and that is also, you know, a provider that could be used by companies, although once again, they tend to be more of a bigger wholesaler-type company. They provide access, and I know they've got some people out on Business 151 that they provide access to. So it was the impetus that drove us. When built out from Platteville, a lot of connectivity, particularly to cell towers, so the cell service and bandwidth and broadband capabilities that cell providers have in the area has been enhanced greatly by this project. And for instance, you know, I'll pick on Todd for a moment. He was able to acquire circuits through WINS to get to his clinic in Cuba City. So PECAN acts as the first mile to get to WINS, and then WINS uses their network to get to another location within Grant County in this case. The hospital also uses similar things to build circuits to their medical records and imaging systems in Madison and Jamesville. You're on mute.
I was coughing. I didn't think you'd all like to hear that. So, questions or comments? Otherwise, I have one, of course. Shane? Perhaps you could tell, I mean, I just heard you're not, Grant County is not a member of PECAN, but you're certainly a government or a whatever agency. And by the way, you're muted, Shane. But, Dan, do I understand from what you said that WINS built out some kind of fiber to Grant County or to Lancaster? So would the potential exist for Grant County to come on to the PECAN network as a member through this kind of connection that Todd utilized to get to Cuba City?
Well, I guess we'd have to find out what the benefits of being a PECAN member would be to Grant County. From what, and maybe I'm speaking for Shane here, but from what I understand, some of the goals that they're trying to achieve is one, to increase their Wisknet connectivity. And, you know, PECAN could potentially be a part of the fiber optic network to make that happen. There's also the goal to have better connectivity for 911 for the city of Platteville. And I would argue that that's probably maybe a city connection, not so much a Grant County connection, and that the city's membership would cover that as its hands, at least Platteville part of it. And then they're also trying to tie together radio towers that they're building, which, you know, the can doesn't really reach out that far to really facilitate that sort of connectivity.
I would also like to add that we're also planning to allow the ring to be used by internet service providers to expand broadband access in Wisconsin, or sorry, in Grant County. Because, you know, the loop traverses all the way around Grant County. As soon as they are on our loop, so to speak, they can now have access, or they can easily access all areas that that fiber traverses by. Added bonus, sorry?
Use light fiber?
We are working on that right now. So we're hoping to start this summer with the eventual goal of basically encircling Grant County with a 144 fiber loop. The other advantage would be, since we have radio towers, 11 of them, as Plan does right now, those towers those towers are instantly available for cellular providers and broadband providers. You know, for point to point wireless. And we're hoping that we have enough fibers so that we can act as a transport so that we can lower the entry costs for ISPs to get into the area and help them get from place to place. It's also my goal to have basically a hybrid. So PCAN, as Dan explained, is basically passive. You know, they hand the fiber and then it's up to who's ever using it to light it up. It's my goal for the county is we're going to have that. And we are also going to be lighting up some of our own strands to allow people on in terms of a full loop because the county wants to use certain services too around the county. For example, our sheriff's office uses body cameras. We want to permit so that they can pull into a tower site and upload their body cam video anywhere in Grant County. It would also allow certain people, and we have to figure this out. We could allow people on our switch network. So we're lighting up the fiber and then they could traverse on top of our switch network around the loop. A lot of this is in discussion and we're still working on the the final plan. But I like to thank Dan and and the PCAN membership for, you know, entertaining us and answering a lot of our questions because, you know, you guys have gotten there first and we're trying to come up with an earning curve as fast as we can.
One thing about the network that Shane's proposing is that it's a lot wider, longer distances. And so the equipment necessary to light that sort of connection is more expensive. And to for an individual customer to light all, each individual customer to light their own connection is probably not the best approach. It'd be better to share equipment in that case. Whereas the fiber optic network within Platteville itself is such short distances that a fairly inexpensive form of equipment can be used to do that. The nice thing about having it all separate is we don't have to worry about security or or management or or anything. It's really totally separate networks all overlaid on the same cable, just on different strands. Just makes it easy to manage and and operate.
Is there anybody else on the PCAN board that has something that they'd wish to add at this time? And I'm going to ask what I call the million dollar question. Your revenue source right now for PCAN is member dues. Am I understanding that you could not sell or or entertain an ISP provider as a pay, as a contracted payer? I don't know if I'd said that right.
Well, we've struggled with that over the years. We haven't done that yet. But that is possibly an option, I guess. Here's a couple of the issues. There is legislation out there that prevents the usage of the grant fiber and also the the membership of the UW being part of that. There's additional restrictions placed on that as to what we can do and what we can provide other people. So it kind of is a safety net. The lawyers that drafted our bylaws and stuff wrote in there that we could not make the network available to others. So certainly we can pass motions to change the bylaws. I I guess we just have to work out the legislative issues. Another thing is when we built PCAN, we, you know, we were already aware of the limitations and such. And there were being placed on us to some degree. Didn't overbuild it. And we are already, because of the topology that we're using, utilizing almost all of the fiber that's been put in. I mean, it's pretty surprising the demand there has been. One of the things that causes some of that is I always kind of use it a rule of thumb. If you want redundancy, it's going to cost you about triple. So same thing with the amount of fiber used. It's going to cost you to take just about a triple amount of fiber than a single connection would take. So it is very fiber intensive. It doesn't mean we couldn't switch technologies or implement other things to free up some strands. And then there's also the opportunity to to expand and and build new fiber links to to either create new loops or bisect existing loops that would potentially free up stuff. Now, one of the other things I should mention, so NDI actually encourages the use of this fiber for private uses and for residential and what have you. It really so their terminology or their their requirements actually require us to make that available to others. But also the stipulation was that we could not violate any local or state statutes. And state statutes were put in place that prevented us from this. So that's kind of where we sit is the the state statutes preventing public entities basically is kind of how we've looked at it. And and that's kind of where we've been handicapped. That's why I think it's really important to have a private partner be a part owner or full owner of the fiber in order to be able to do this without having many of these issues of sharing fiber. There have been some things that we have been able to do. So we worked with Wind Technologies at one point to take a stretch of fiber that was not part of the grant and pull it out and reuse the conduit and let them install their own fiber in that conduit. And in turn, allow us to use the strands in their cable. So now they're the owner of the fiber and kind of that's how we worked around the problem is by letting them use it. So now, you know, the city has a fair amount of vacant conduit available. And there may be opportunities, you know, with PCAN as well. If we have providers that pull in their own fiber and vacant conduit. I'm not aware of anything that's preventing us from sharing conduit or or things like that. So I don't know. I mean, it's possible that we might be able to work out a deal with somebody, particularly Packerland should see Austria because they were originally enumerated in the grant. However, and they were, I I think, given fibers in the other communities, but I don't think in Platteville they were allocated any fiber.
Others with questions, Eileen? No, Ken?
No question.
Robin?
Maybe a clarification. Um, I'm trying to think how many months back it was where a lot of Grant County was out of Internet service for quite a length of time. Would our emergency responders have had access without PCAN? Or how power, how do we do emergency services when we have those cut by Century Link that affect a great, it sounds like they don't have the redundancy that we need there.
So the fire department is part of the city network. And the ambulance building, ambulance is run by Southwest Health at this point. Neither of those went down. They were part of PCAN and and also using Wisnet connectivity. The PD also was part of PCAN, part of the city, so they didn't go down. So I guess, you know, there was other communities and maybe Grant County itself might have been impacted. I don't know. So I guess just in general, with the Century Link services, there's obviously a lot of things that can go wrong with a network. One of the things is fiber cuts. And I think from what little I know about Century Link's network is that they just don't have redundancy into Platteville. Maybe they do in in some other communities, but there isn't in the Platteville. And so a fiber cut up, you know, up north, say like Muscatay or somewhere else, wherever their fiber is, can affect the entire county or it can affect Platteville customers. And it can take days or well, I shouldn't say days, but it can take hours at least to fix something like that. And and the funny thing is it doesn't just impact just Century Link. It often impacts cellular providers as well. Either you have cellular providers getting their uplinks from some Century Link. Or maybe they're just happen to be using that same fiber cable that got cut. So it isn't just Century Link sometimes that it's cut because you have to look at, you know, is the other providers using the same cable as what, you know, Century Link is using. Then there are times, you know, that it doesn't have to do with fiber. It has to do with maybe a misconfiguration or maybe there's an attack that's saturating Century Link's network. So one of the things I need to explain to you is there are often these DOS attacks, denial of service attacks that are being made some, you know, and it's quite prevalent, actually. It unfortunately has become available as a service. You can buy an attack on someone. And it happens a lot. In fact, I see it practically daily at the university where a gamer typically is being attacked. And it's they're trying to knock that gamer out of the game. And the the problem is there's a lot of collateral damage. It affects other people's use of the network. So it might affect a number of people and may even affect everybody's connection. Or maybe it might affect a certain group of people in, let's say, a certain block or a certain device that's attached to the Century Link network that they're all sharing. Denial service works usually based on saturating the network connectivity that's out there with just trash, just garbage. And there are some things that I've done with UDU network to try and alleviate those problems. It's not, there's nothing you can do to prevent them, but you can do certain things to try and cut down on the collateral damage. And then there's other things, you know, I did listen to the recording of the previous session. Bill was right, there's opportunities for customer owned equipment, you know, like routers and your own wireless connectivity within your house to be a problem. You know, just turning on your microwave can knock down your wireless signal. So there are things that I don't think people really understand that there can be interference on the wireless spectrum or competition with other people in your building or nearby that because it's an unlicensed frequency, anything could happen or be used. And it could be there one day and gone the next. So it's very difficult to troubleshoot that that sort of thing. You also have equipment that's either bad or failing or more likely infected. So there are a lot of problems with routers and other equipment getting infected. And oftentimes they're being used to create these DOS attacks. So you might be being hijacked, your computer or your router or maybe your security camera has been infected and is being hijacked to attack someone else. Well, that outgoing traffic that you're generating is slowing down your computer. It's slowing down your network. It's causing problems for you as well. So there's that. There's also the wiring within your own building, you know, might be a problem. There's also maybe problems with Century Link's fiber. Can be just as simple as dirty connections. And I don't know how well a job they they do of monitoring that. Unless the customer reports problems and they trace it back to a dirty fiber connector or some network link showing a lot of errors, you can be suffering from a lot of packet loss due to just either failing electronics or dirty connections or or something along those lines. So there's a lot of different layers and a lot of different places. But networks can be either congested or not operate reliably or outright fail. The redundancy thing is one thing that, you know, it's not just the ISP that needs to invest in redundancy, but it's also the customer. So if you're a business, if you're a retailer or if you're a larger organization, you should buy into either more than one ISP or buy into at least redundancy to get from your site to an ISP. And it costs money. It's going to cost you, you know, a lot more money to do that than just a straight up single connection.
Thanks, Dan. Kathy, do you have questions or comments?
No, I think most of my questions were answered. Thank you.
Jason?
Nothing additional for me.
And Isaac?
No questions. I believe everything's been answered.
Okay. All right. Nicola, did I see your hand up?
If if there's a minute here, I did have something that I thought maybe we could ask Dan while we have him here. Obviously, Dan, you know, you have a vast knowledge of the technology and the history and everything that goes into into what can be successful and what can create problems with people's connectivity in their homes and businesses in Platteville. I've just received an education myself. The the council is is trying to explore, is there anything as a council that we can do as a city to try to help the residents with the problems that they're having? What would you say would be the best avenue that you would recommend that that we might pursue as a city? I mean, there's lots of different pathways we could potentially go down. But what do you think would be the best bang for our buck in terms of trying to help the city?
Well, I guess one of the things is so Century Link kind of has a what do you want to call it, closed market or a
Monopoly?
Yeah, yeah, sort of in the, you know, they've built the infrastructure. That fiber infrastructure is actually probably very good. The configuration and and the management of the equipment, maybe not so good. The design of it, you know, the connectivity to from like outside of Platteville, maybe not so good. But I do think the fiber network that they built within Platteville is probably actually quite good. So the city has put in these vacant conduits. And that is a great idea. I think that's along the same lines of what PCAN was trying to do in that you build infrastructure that is shared that you can use and you can offer. And I think Century Link just needs a little bit of competition to keep them honest. And also it it will foster the, you know, through competition, require that a a ISP, whoever it is, they're going to fight over customers and they're going to want to provide great service. And so they're going to have to invest in infrastructure, in service and support in order to provide that that level of service to to retain their customers. So by attracting other ISPs, and I think you're doing some of the efforts to do that. And I think what you need to do is maybe have, like you were mentioning before, a broadband commission or council or maybe PCAN can help with that. A group of people that are just, that's what they do. I mean, the city council's got many issues to deal with. They can't be dealing with the minutia of broadband, but a group of people that are dedicated to that and continue to seek the other companies as well as keep the pressure on existing providers to to try and provide the best service, I think, is the way to go. You know, there are other companies I didn't mention here, you know, there's Kamala and there's why why connect wireless in the area? They offer wireless connectivity, you know, wireless connectivity within the city itself proper is probably not the greatest option because of the train and and the need for oftentimes line of sight connectivity. But they could also maybe offer or be a partner. Certainly the surrounding area, they can do a very good job in. I think when you get to rural, really rural connectivity, that's where wireless shines and not so much within a town itself. In a town, you're going to want to, I think, concentrate on fiber connectivity. And then also I should mention Starlink. So, you know, there are, there is Starlink and there's other satellites, new low earth orbit satellite providers that are starting up. It's yet to be seen what these will deliver, but It's yet to be seen what these will deliver, but I think for rural connectivity where you don't have any other option, maritime operations and other mobile operations, they could actually be a very big game changer. It could be the dish network of the, the internet connectivity is what I would see. However, all, as Elon would say, there has yet to be a satellite provider that hasn't gone through bankruptcy. It is very difficult to underrate that technology. It's very expensive and very difficult to deliver. And also the reliability of it is often a, a big challenge. So I'm not saying that Starlink is going to be the option for everyone. It certainly is not going to be less expensive than fiber. But it certainly is a great option, especially if you can take one Starlink terminal and share it. I don't know what their terms of services are, but if, for instance, I had thought about what if we put one in a trailer court and put a Wi-Fi AP on it and then shared out. Maybe that could be a great solution for low-income or challenged households. But anyways, there are, I think, good opportunities. And I think part of it is, you know, another thing you can do is pursue those PSC grants, but to do it, you're going to have to have a a broadband provider, a private broadband provider that you can partner with to get those grants. And also I think there's going to be big money available here coming out of the Fed just like there was, you know, with this last grant that we were successful with. And, you know, potentially could apply for something like that. Another thing I wanted to mention, just some of the things that we've done in the past year too, that we should consider. And that is we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to do a vendor fair so that we could get the vendors here, get people of the community in front of them and allow businesses and community members to see what options are actually already available. And also maybe encourage vendors from that perspective to see, hey, there is a market here. So I think that is useful. Could also maybe have a round table or, or something of ISPs to try and get them in a room and get them to see that, yes, there is desire, here are gripes and maybe see if there's any opportunities there. And then also I just wanted to mention too, that PCAN has been working with the city to do various things for the community in general. And PCAN has been taking some of their funds and doing small fiber builds out to the parks and some of the other city facilities so that the city could then take that fiber and put equipment on it and deliver wireless access to community members. I think that's a great attractor for people. It also is great for parents when they're, you know, trying to mix being at the kids' games and such and also being able to be connected and do other things at the same time.
Barb, real quick.
Go ahead.
One of the things we didn't mention, one of the things we didn't mention on our expenses was fiber maintenance. That's, that's another big part. And what Dan was just talking about, I just wanted to give some examples. When you go to the Broski Center and you join the internet at the Broski Center, that comes to the Broski Center via cable put in by PCAN. Next summer or this coming summer, when you go out to the baseball fields at Legion Field, you should be able to connect to wireless because we ran a line from a main line into the concession stand to allow wireless network to be put up in that. So those are some of the kinds of things that Dan was mentioning, just specific examples of that.
And, and Bill, thanks for bringing that up because that's one of the things that I have seen during the past year is the number of cars that congregate in certain places, whether it be downtown or around a park or whatever. And I know when I see them sitting in their car with the motor running and this in front of them, what they're doing is connecting to the, and doing whatever business or, or job application or whatever that they need to do. So guys, we heard a lot. We thank PCAN for joining us tonight. We do have a seven o'clock council meeting and my clocks say it's anywhere between 6:55 and 6:59. So I believe that we're going to call for adjournment. Actually, I'm just going to call adjournment and have council members raise your hand if you're in agreement to adjourn. And then we'll all be able to log on to our next meeting. But thank you, Todd. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Bill, Mike, Jim. I think I've got all of you from PCAN. Shane, thanks. And Babkini, thanks for joining us. And this is, I just, oh, Mike, sure, I missed you. I see you. This is a discussion that will continue as we progress through this year. And I fully anticipate the formation of a broadband task force. So if you're interested in being on that and being dedicated to lots of meetings to learn more about things like denial of service and dirty connections, please let Adam know or let me know. But in the meantime, we're signing off from this meeting and some of us going to the next. Thanks again, PCAN.